I'd call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order. Please stand for our indication, remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, Postion of Colors, and the National Anthem, please. We now have our indication. Lord, we thank you for this day, this opportunity to come together. We ask your guidance in all that takes place here tonight, grant us wisdom and be with those that serve here locally and around the world tonight. In your holy name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the rocket's singe in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
You may be seated. We certainly appreciate the Cape Fear Chordsmen being here tonight. I think Mr. Smith will have a few things to say in just a few minutes, but I know you want to give them a round of applause for that rendition.[215.43][215.43](APPLAUSE). I've offered them the opportunity, like I do school groups, to come up and tell us their name, what grade they're in, and what school they attend, but we'll pass that and you can tell us in a few minutes what you would like for us to know. At this time, I'd like to also recognize our color guard. The color is presented by EA Laney High School under the Principal, Mr. Al O'Brien. I don't know if Al is here tonight, but we appreciate it with the cadets. They're under the command of, let's see, Colonel Thomas Harrison Smith and Master Sergeant Bruce C. Cadets, would you, when you get a second, would you like to come up and give us your names? And we know it's Laney High School. Master Sergeant, would you like to? They're busy.
It's like all NCOs get put on the spot. We got Cadet Hartnett over there, raise your hand. Cadet Jones. Cadet Owensby. And Cadet Buck. And we also have, in civilian clothes, we have Cadet Blizzard helping out.
We certainly appreciate you being here tonight. Ms. Adams, we call the roll, please.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda and the additions, deletions.
I'd ask, we had one announcement at the end. There was a change in state law that requires us to announce new construction, so I've got that announcement ready to go for the end.
Okay. Motion to approve the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item three is approval of the minutes. Would you like to do all these at one time or one by one?
I looked at them all carefully, so I think we can do them all at one time.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. They are approved. Item four, recognition of achievement at this time.
Good evening, everyone. So glad you're here. We have two very special awards this evening, and our first one is for one of our students, Gunner Robinson, who's a fifth grade student at Murrayville Elementary School. And you may have heard of Gunner, but let me tell you a little bit about him. For the past two years, Gunner has collected and donated over 550 pairs of shoes to students in grades K through 12 in New Hanover, Brunswick, and Pender Counties. To help with his shoe collection, Gunner asks for shoe donations instead of birthday presents. He's even partnered with the local shoe carnival store to increase his donations. So we are very proud of this young man. He's been recognized on the Ellen Show and in the local media, and so our board thought that it would be so nice for us to recognize him here. So Gunner, if you're here, would you please come forward? There he is. And if Gunner's family and his principal, Ms. Dominowski, are here, would you please wave or stand so we could thank you for supporting this outstanding young man? Great job, Gunner. That's the favorite part of my job, Mr. Hayes. That's the favorite part of my job. And next, we will have a representative from the Cape Fear Chordsmen, who we just heard with that beautiful music, make a presentation to our high school choral program, and I'll ask Mr. Tim McCoy, our arts director, to come up and receive that.
Tim, on behalf of the Cape Fear Chordsmen, we're the local chapter of the International Barbershop Harmony Society, which is a four-part men's harmony. Now, we've got men back here, some are leads, all the leads, raise your hand. And then we've got paratones, who make weird music. And we've got the tenors over here, bass. Now, those are the cool guys. They're most of the bigger than the rest of them. On behalf of our guys here with Cape Fear Chordsmen and the International Barbershop Harmony Society, through our Youth in Harmony program, we'd like to present, on behalf of county schools, a check of $1,200 from the Cape Fear Chordsmen.
Now, do you see the bass?
Always nice when you get a check.
I know.
It's a lot of fun. We appreciate them being here tonight. Some years ago, there was a mix-up, because normally, as you know, we have a school group that would do the National Anthem, but it's always nice to have a change of pace, and we had them some years ago, and everyone certainly enjoyed it. This time, item five, call to the audience. Had two individuals, excuse me. First speaker, and please remember our three-minute time limit, Mr. Steve Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is Steve Lee, and I'm the Secretary-Treasure of the Southeastern Alliance for Community Change, and I'm a member of the Parents Council of the New Hanover County branch of the NAACP. Last 15 years, we've become very fearful as a nation, and zero tolerance policies abound in all phases of American life. This includes public schools. The results for public schools and us has been a constellation of dismal statistics, three of which concern us and many people here tonight. The rate of suspension in public schools, number one, the rate of dropouts in public schools, and thirdly, the increase in the prison population. This is true nationally as well as locally. School suspensions start this process. In general, in a zero-tolerance atmosphere, suspension is currently the tool of first resort, a tool of choice for maintaining an environment conducive to learning. The consequences, however, are increased dropout rates and ultimately increased prison population. Tonight, you have an opportunity to reverse this sad situation. The inter-agency agreement that is before you would possibly shift suspension from a tool of first resort, a tool of first choice, to simply one more tool that's available to administrators as they maintain an environment conducive to learning. This inter-agency agreement has been fashioned and shaped by the courts of this county, by law enforcement, and by people on your own staff. I believe that it is an excellent tool that will be available to you to turn these sad statistics around and keep kids in school. Thank you very much.
Next, Mr. George Velassits. Velassits? Velassits. You're right, too small.
My name is George Velassits, and I am the Education Chair for the NAACP in New Hanover County, and also one of the conveners of the NAACP Parents Council. On behalf of the NAACP Parents Council, I would like to urge the adoption of the inter-agency agreement, which the board is considering at this meeting. I believe that we can all agree that reducing the involvement of law enforcement and the courts in dealing with minor student misconduct is a worthwhile goal. We have a problem in this country, alluded to by the previous speaker, and New Hanover County is no exception. That problem is the mass incarceration of young males, predominantly minorities. And unfortunately, school policies have, in many cases, been responsible for starting youngsters down what we commonly call the school-to-prison pipeline. The agreement before you provides a basis for stopping this flow. It sets in place clear guidelines and emphasizes graduated responses to minor student misconduct. And I want to add, because I've been working with a parent lately of a first grader who was basically suspended on a number of instances for misconduct in school, and it became the school's choice immediately, if something happened, call mom, haven't taken home. And this is a first grader we're talking about, a kid eight years, seven, eight, eight years old. So I think this agreement is important in that it clarifies roles of the various agencies, including the school resource officers, and it places the responsibility for discipline of students where it should be, in the hands of school administrators. While we in the NAACP Parents Council assert that much more needs to be done with regard to issues of discipline, this is an excellent beginning, and we hope the board will approve and implement this agreement as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, item six, administrative personnel. Item A, administrative recommendations, Dr. Markley.
Good evening. We have two recommendations this evening. The first is for our supervisor of school counseling and social worker, Ms. Kathy Newcomb. Ms. Newcomb is currently an assistant principal at Winnicott High School in New Hampshire. Coming from New Hampshire, it has to be good. Previously, served as assistant principal at Exeter School and guidance counselor at Farmington High School and Sandborne Middle School in New Hampshire. Served as a dropout prevention at Dahladel Junior High in Tampa, Florida, and as a teacher in New Hampshire. The position, supervisor of school counseling, is an at-will position, and that's why you didn't have a contract that was forwarded to you ahead of time. She has her master's from the University of South Florida and a degree from the University of Vermont and an advanced degree from Plymouth State College. I'd ask that she be approved for this position.
Move for approval?
New Hampshire, huh?
It's a great place.
Don, that's knowledge. Everybody's moving here.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments? Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. If Ms. Newcomb is here, she'll stand up and be recognized. Our second recommendation is for the middle school assistant principal position at Williston Middle School. The recommendation is Jill Larson, currently serving as a counselor at the Mosley Readiness Academy, and prior to this, she served as a counselor at Lakeside with the Pathways Program and as a case manager with the North Central Mental Health in Columbus, Ohio. Her administrative contract will be in effect until June 30th, 2017. She received her master's degree and bachelor's degree from the University of Dayton in Ohio and her school administrative licensure with Gardner Web University. I'd ask for approval. Move for approval.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Ms. Larson is here. Sorry, I'll let you vote first.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item seven, Head Start. Item A, Head Start Liaison Report, Mr. Higgins.
Well, this will be a very brief report. Our Head Start liaison apparently has some family issue, illness in her family, so she did not get me all the statistical data that I would normally have. I do have, and I would point out, Appendix B, there is a accounting report, which indicates that to date, they have spent, depending on which line item you're looking at, between none of the money to 41% for purposes, expenses, and then for professional development, they have expended a sizable amount for the pre-K readiness, but on some others, they still have sufficient funds, especially parental involvement services, which is, I believe I pointed out last month, parental involvement is a real key to successful Head Start programs, and they are going to be implementing all kinds of programs to help encourage parents to be involved, to be able to help their children at home, as well as making sure they understand the importance of children coming to school and being there on a regular basis. And I'll mention this again at the end of our meeting, but there is a Head Start Policy Council meeting that will be on October 28th, and that's the totality of my report tonight.
Does that include the expenditure report also?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, item eight, under information. Item A, Ready Data Assessment Report, Appendix C, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you. Annually, we present to the board, as well as publish, a summary of the district's performance on our end-of-year assessments. In that report, which is going to be presented by our Director of Accountability, Ms. Karen Green, we provide a comparison of both urban districts and also a comparison of our performance with regional school districts as well. She'll highlight for other subgroup information, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you have at the end. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Green. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present our most recent Ready Data. In North Carolina, the Ready Model focuses on career and college readiness, hence Ready. So the annual report contents, I'm just going to brief you on that. We talk, first of all, about the components of the model, and then go into comparing us against other districts and the state, as well as surrounding charters, and then we'll talk a little bit about school performance grades, which is, this is our second year for having school performance grades, and then we'll talk about proficiency versus growth, the two measures for schools and for students. And then a little bit about the career and college readiness measures, which you find at the high school level. There's some additional assessments and measures. And then our federal annual measurable objectives, which really focuses on student groups, different student groups. And then at the end of your report, we have a page for every school, like a school report card at the end. So for elementary and middle, the components of the model, the accountability model, include English, language arts, and mathematics assessments in grades three through eight. We test in grades three through eight, English, language arts, and math. And then the science assessments in grades five and eight, and then any end-of-course tests that our middle school children may be taking. In high school, we have end-of-course assessments, which are similar to end-of-grade. We have those in English two, biology, and math one. We have, of course, our graduation rate. The ACT is another measure that all students, all 11th grade students in North Carolina take free of charge, and that's the percentage of students that meet the UNC entrance requirement, which is a composite of 17. We also have a math course rigor metric, and in this state, it's the percentage of graduates that have successfully passed math three, which is considered our old Algebra II on a much more rigorous level. Then we have our career readiness assessment. Part of the Ready Model is the workkeys assessment, and this is not given to all graduates. This assessment is just given to career and technical education concentrators. Those are CTE concentrators that have had four credits in a career cluster, such as health science, or construction trades, or financial management, things of that nature. And if they score at least a silver level, they're awarded a career readiness certificate that's recognized by 16 businesses in our district area. And then we have the graduation project, which isn't actually factored in numerically. We just get an endorsement that we do participate as a district on graduation project. So when we're talking about how students and how schools are performing, there are different measures, there are different terms, different language that we use. Performance is how our students are doing, and performance is shared in terms of achievement level. So when we send reports home to parents or to schools and teachers, they're reported in terms of achievement levels one through five, and achievement levels three through five are considered proficient. Now, we do delineate between grade-level proficiency and career and college readiness, but for school performance grades, for school performance composite, threes, fours, and fives are considered proficient, or meeting the mark. The performance composite is that one number for each school where you're taking all of the tests and putting them together, and that's the percent of test scores that met the mark, met the proficiency mark of three, four, and five, and that's called the performance composite, because it is one number. In addition to performance, which is, did the child meet the mark, we also look at student growth and school growth. You know, how did we progress? The standard is really roughly, you have a year of instruction, the expectation is there's a year of growth, and if for a year of instruction, if you have that year of growth, that's considered you met the growth expectation. If you didn't have that growth, then you're deemed not met. And then, of course, we have schools that exceed that, so children are actually getting more than a year's worth of growth in one school year, and that's called exceeded growth expectations. And then we have progress, which is really our federal metric. When we're looking at groups of students, we're looking at students with disabilities, we're looking at economically disadvantaged students, we're looking at student groups to see how they're progressing. So we're not just looking at the school as a whole, but we're also looking at groups of students. So in terms of our performance composite, when we take all of our test scores in the district together for elementary, middle, and high school, this year, we had a 63.3% proficiency across our district as compared to the state, and we typically outperform the state in everything. We had a slight dip from the year before, which is consistent across the state, I might add. On every end-of-grade, end-of-course assessment, we outperform the state. So we have grades three through eight, English, language arts, math, science, and then in math one, biology, and English two as well. If you're taking a look at how we're doing regionally, we're outperforming the region as well. And then if you look at urban districts, we're outperforming all urban districts with the exception of Wake County, and when you look at similar-sized districts in terms of student enrollment, we're outperforming our similar-sized district partners. This is the second year that we've had school performance grades, and this just shows you a little distribution compared to the state. One of the new features this year is we have A-plus schools, and we didn't have that last year, we just had A-schools. But A-plus schools are schools that have a smaller gap in achievement among different student groups than the state does, and so they've been given that designation. And this is how we stack up against charters. Oftentimes, we really look at Cape Fear Center for Inquiry and Charter Day, which is Roger Bacon, and all of our elementary schools met or exceeded growth expectations, but we cannot say that for some of our charter partners in elementary. Wrightsville Beach Elementary, if you'll notice, they do not have an A+, but their total number is larger than partially, and that's because they didn't have enough student groups. In addition to the all-student groups, you had to have at least two other student groups. So they either had to have a students with disabilities group, a black group, an economically disadvantaged group, so they had to have two more groups, and so they just didn't have enough subgroups. So I wanted to show you a little trend data for the past two years in grades three through eight, English, language arts, compared to the state. We took a little dip, and the state remained stagnant. When we're looking at grade levels, we are focusing on some grade-eight reading, professional learning communities. We took a dip in grade-eight reading, and that affected us district-wide. We had, we took a dip in grade-eight reading, and that affected us district-wide. In Mathematics, we remained about the same, we're up just a little bit. Last year's focus was really on fourth grade, and I'm happy to report that we saw some improvements in the strategies that we used across the district with fourth-grade teachers in terms of professional development. And in five and eight, Science, we came up a little bit in eighth grade. In fifth grade, we saw a little bit of a drop. Then when we get to high school, we did see some changes in how we performed in English Two, but if you'll notice, the state's trend is the same as well. Districts across the state have expressed concern about the dip, but it's statewide. We've done some things in the district to try to address that. We're doing some backwards planning with our ACT data and our English Two data in order to get better prepared in English. We've also restructured the Instructional Services Department so that we have a dedicated supervisor for nine, twelve, English, Language Arts, as well as Graduation Project. And in Math One, we took a little slide as well. I might add that in Math One, when you take a look at teaching assignments across the district, we have more mobility in Math One than we do in any other course that we offer at the high school. So when you're taking a look at the teacher distribution, some years, you know, I may teach Math One, but next year, my counterpart, Elizabeth, may teach Math One. So there's a lot of mobility in terms of Math One teaching assignments. And we've lost a lot of math teachers to retirement. And in Biology, we've seen a little dip. We've started some professional learning communities. The Instructional Service Department, under the leadership of Dr. Smith, has started some professional learning community discussions with high school principals around improving these scores. We're analyzing formative data. We participate in giving formative assessments every quarter now, and we just finished providing principals with some feedback upon which we're going to have a conversation with them following the principals' meeting on Thursday. So we've tried to put some things in place so that we can catch things before the end of the year to be a little more proactive, especially since we have a lot of new people teaching some of these subjects in high school. And then, that was proficiency, but in terms of growth, eighty percent of our schools either met or exceeded growth expectations as compared to the state. All of our elementary schools either met or exceeded growth. And at the high school level, those career and college readiness indicators, we did increase in our graduation rate, however, it is slightly still below the state rate. One of the things that we have put in place is some additional structures to help students, for example, on the occupational course of study, to ensure that they get all the work, the outside work hours that's required for their graduation. We were continuing with the dropout prevention group and trying to be a little more collaborative in terms of our dropouts and following up with them. We outperform the state on the ACT, and over the past three years since we've been giving the ACT, last year, our ACT score was 68.8. So that means 71.3% of our juniors have met the entrance requirements for any UNC school in the state, and they're just in their junior year. The Work Keys Assessment, we're a little bit below the state. We don't test as many of those. We don't have as many career concentrators. The ACT, we test all juniors. But for Work Keys, they have to specifically have that four-course concentration in order to be, to qualify for that particular assessment. And then math course rigor, greater than 95% of our students are successfully passing There was a lot of discussion this past year in the Dropout Prevention Committee and the structures we've tried to put in place to really focus on improving graduation rates for specific student groups. And so, inasmuch as we had some improvement for some other student groups, I just wanted to highlight the largest improvement for the student groups here. Our Students with Disabilities came up from 53.7 to 64.2. We still have more work to do, but we're confident that some of the structures we put in place last year are gleaning some of the results that we're hoping for. Now, the Career and Technical Education courses in high school, there are, I don't know, 120 Career and Technical Education courses, they require end-of-course tests as well. So they have their own CTE end-of-course assessments, and their district proficiency is 80% on those assessments. And this past year, we had 1,347 industry credentials earned, which is a 28.3% increase from the previous year. And these are some examples of some of the credentials earned. Some financial credentials, some construction trade credentials, Nurses Aid, SafeServe, those are just a few of the examples of some of the credentials our students are earning, and they're taking to the workplace. And then our last metric is Progress, which is our federal annual measurable objectives, and that's where we really look at different groups of students. So these are all the different groups of students that we're looking at for federal. And in order, in a school to have that group, you have to have 30 students. So if I only have 28 limited English proficient students in my school, then I don't have a group. I have to have 30. And then, of course, these are the assessments that we look at for those student groups. And really, there are two essential questions. One has to do with student participation, and the other one has to do with student proficiency. And the essential question for participation is, did all students in the group participate? Did they come to school and take the test? And we're held to a 95% standard. And then the second question is, did the student group meet the performance standard? And that's for federal requirements.
One thing, Ms. Green, could I throw out that also, for everyone's benefit, that a student can be in more than one group, quite a few of the groups that one particular student could be in.
That's an excellent point, Mr. Hayes. You know, I could be in the all-student group, I could be in the white student group, I could be...
Economically disadvantaged.
Economically disadvantaged, and I could be in the Students with Disabilities group. So one student may hit more than one group.
And if it's a small group to begin with, it could really impact the end result.
Yeah, at a lot of our schools, we may have just a small, like, limited English proficient group, or Students with Disabilities group. And so if, you know, one or two students don't meet the mark, then they don't meet the mark. And that's why sometimes when you're looking at the data, you have to dig a little deeper and start looking at the numbers, the N, the how many students were participating. So district-wide, we met 78% of our annual measurable objectives as compared to the And then the Section Two of your Ready Report really details those school reports. We tried to highlight as many things as we could for you so you could get an overview. We also added some trend data, so you see a three-year trend in terms of Progress.
And our report is online and available to anyone who wants to go to the testing section of our website.
It'll be under Scores and Data. Yes, my webmaster's been out six, so we're a little behind. But it is linked to this agenda for tonight, and it will be up on our webpage tomorrow, under Scores and Data.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, item nine, Superintendent's Report.
Just a couple of real quick things. First of all, in case you missed it, we had a, probably one of the most major non-hurricane rain events I think we can remember in the district's history. I want to thank our custodial folks and all the other folks who were out there this weekend checking on our buildings. Other than minor leaks, we were, didn't have any issues with our school buildings. That says a lot to the folks who work in those buildings and build them. I was out of town at a family event, so I want to thank Rick and the folks who were here, who were making, checking some of those roads, and those folks. As of right now, there's one small corner of Edgewood with about 25 students who are the only ones who are still being affected by flooding, and we're working to make sure we can service those students. So again, to those folks who were here this weekend, our maintenance folks, appreciate the job you did.
Absolutely. And the patience of the parents, understanding how important it was to have the delay today so that the drivers could check the roads, and we did well.
Yeah, our communications have greatly improved over the last five years. I mean, our social media, I mean, believe it, what have we done? We added 1,000 Twitter users in the last two days. It's one of the ways they follow us to keep up with the information, so. Thanks to everyone for a job well done there. Groundbreaking. We'd like to do the groundbreaking for the Northeast Elementary School. There are some dates that I'd ask you to look at your calendar and let me know if they work. November 19, 20, or 30th, and then December 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. We'll send you a little poll out to further on, but, folks, we are, we're making progress, and these bond projects are coming due. So just check your calendars on those, if you would, please. We'll send out a nice survey, collect them all, and see where we can go from there. Then we'll check with the county as well, since we'll ask them to join us. That is it for Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you. Item 10, under Consensus Items, item A, Personnel, Appendix D, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to just point out that at each of your seats, we put a notebook, a blue notebook, with a blue pen with New Hanover County Schools on it. Each year, we do a Assistant Principal Academy, where we work with a lot of our assistant principals on leadership skills and a lot of other things to get them ready for being a principal in the future, and just wanted to share with you and thank you for the hard work you guys do, and just a little notebook you can carry with you that's from the academy. And I'd like to request that Personnel Matters be approved as presented.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, thank you. And thank you for the notebooks. Glad to hear they're not leftovers, or just...
Well, some of them are. The pens, too, are extremely valuable, so don't lose those.
I noticed that. Okay, under Old Business, item A, Interlocal Agreement for Sales Tax Refunds, Appendix E, Mr. Bullard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This came before you at the last meeting, and...
This came before you at the last meeting, and the Board had a change that it reviewed that was proposed by the County Finance Department. The Board was not in favor of making that change, and so the agreement is back before you the way it was originally presented. And again, the purpose of the agreement is to, for the county and the school board to work together so that a complete refund of the sales taxes paid to the state on the construction materials for the new construction projects under the bond will be refunded and used in this county and not stay with the state. So this is here for the Board's consideration as originally presented.
I'll move for approval, but I do have a question.
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Higgins?
Have a question, just for clarification. Section Six, Paragraph B, Sales Tax Refund. And I just want to, I mean, I read it, and it says what I would like for it to say, but I just want to be clear about this.
Where are you, Ms. Higgins?
I'm on Paragraph, Obligations and Rights of the County, number six, subsection B. And then I go down to the second sentence. "Any sales and use tax refunds received by the county as a result of the construction projects shall be utilized exclusively to provide supplemental funding for the capital building and renovations projects approved by the county." As I read that, that answers one of my major concerns, and that was that the county would not get this sales tax money back and then sit on it, but would, in fact, make it available to the school system for their use. And someplace, I think, it also says that this would not supplant other money. So is that your interpretation of this?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, well, that was my major concern.
That was the concern.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we just wanted to make sure that they didn't get that sales tax money back and say, oh, well, you know, we need to spend it over here, or over there, or somewhere else. But it does say that it will be used for the school system, and as I read it, to provide supplemental funding, not in lieu of funding. So I'm, if that's your interpretation, then I'm okay with it.
Yep.
I would like to say, while you're at the Markey, if you would convey to the county commissioners our appreciation of working out this agreement, because it does provide extra funding that we will sorely need.
We do. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved, thank you. Item B, Calendar, Appendix E1, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the passage of House Bill 371, the presidential preference and the regular primaries have been moved to March 15th, and we would ask that the current school calendar reflect this as a teacher work day in lieu of May 3rd, which was designated for that specific purpose.
We don't typically ask for a calendar change in the middle of the year, but we put that May 3rd date in at the request of the Board of Elections, and they've contacted us about moving that date back so that our schools will be empty for use as voting facilities.
I'd move to approve that.
I'll second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me, it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 12, thank you. Under New Business, item A, Interagency Governance Agreement on the Handling of School Offenses, Appendix F, Dr. Markey.
You've heard our two speakers tonight, and we have several other folks here who are with us. I'm going to move to the larger mics so I can invite some folks to join me. I would ask Judge Corpney to come up and join me. We've been working for the last 18 months on an agreement on how to handle certain aspects of discipline in school. And this agreement has been, gone through multiple revisions. I'd like to thank Wayne, who went through it, Rick, who was also part of that, our school principals have vetted this, as well as a number of agencies that are represented here. If you're here as an agency that we're partnering with, I'd ask you to stand and be recognized. And I'm going to ask Judge Corpney, just to give a little background of how we got to this point.
Sure. Thanks very much. 2012, I went to a national conference on school justice partnerships. Changed my life. I'd never heard of the school-to-prison pipeline. I've been working in our schools as long as I can remember, and honestly, I'd never heard of it. Came back and asked the superintendent to have a cup of coffee with me. We talked about it, and we got delayed a little bit in the process of working on this because of the Sandy Hook tragedy and the request of our District Attorney, Ben David, to have a safer schools task force first. But what led to this is an unprecedented partnership between school justice and community. District Attorney Ben David was here earlier, who had to be DAD and take his tiger cub to the Coast Guard Station at Six, so he couldn't stay. But offers his unqualified support for this effort. Ben was a participant in our meetings and in our work. To have the District Attorney, the Chief of Police, the Sheriff, and our Chief Public Defender, and our Chief Court Counselor for Juvenile Court, all standing in favor of this is really remarkable. And the dynamic between the school representatives who were on the committee, we included Chairman Hayes, Superintendent Dr. Holliday. Wish we had involved Mr. Bullard earlier in the process. But big help, Dave Spencer, Julia Stubblefield, Lisa Burris, James McAdams from the Hanover High School. And from our community, Clifford Barnett, Reverend Clifford Barnett, who most of you know, worked on it. Jana Roberson from UNCW. And I hope I haven't left anybody else out who's here. But a group that worked together to recognize that there's more that we need to do for our children, that they are hired... that they are higher needs now than ever before. You know, when I started my career working in juvenile court 35 years ago as a young lawyer, things were very different than they are now. And, you know, now, instead of kids deciding which pair of sneakers they're going to wear, they decide which gun they're going to carry. And so the point of this is to try to bring a safer school environment for everyone, first, but then also to make a consistent, positive response to student misconduct, student behavior, to try to change that behavior and to change it immediately, instead of delaying the consequences, instead of delaying any kind of reinforcement effort. So the agreement that I know that each of you have had is the result of our 18 months of work. The motivating factor was a project just like this in Clayton County, Georgia, south side of Atlanta. I think I spoke about that when I was here some months ago. Over a period of six years, had dramatic results from implementing it. Schools were safer, incidents went down, graduation rates went up, dropout rates went down, all the positive things that all of us would like to see for our children. The school resource officers were in school more. Instead of spending a day a month or two days a month down at court, instead of spending half a day taking out a juvenile petition, they were at school. Kids were in school. And as Judge Teskey from Clayton County, who came and spent a day with us 18 months ago, said, "Who would have thought that keeping kids in school would make such a positive difference?" But it does. So we've worked this process, we've come up with what we believe, what we collectively believe is a positive step in the right direction. There are lots of problems in our society, and I think it's incumbent on each of us to do what we can do, when we can do it, to affect change. And we believe that this will enhance good things that are already happening in our county. Since we started working on this, there have been changes in the SRO response to discipline already, even though the agreement wasn't finalized. Things began to get better just because we were working on it and everybody knew. And I left out Lieutenant Novella Freeslander. I can sort of feel her eyes burning in the back of my head for not talking about her. But she's been a real champion and a real advocate for her school resources officers in being more positive in response to school behavior, student misconduct. And so that's sort of the, it's a longer thumbnail sketch than I was supposed to give you, but it's exciting work, and it's been exciting for me to be a part of working with all of these folks from both education, from our justice side of things, and for the community.
So at this point, there are questions. Will entertain any questions, but I would ask the board to approve this.
I have a question. I'm looking at the chart on page 5, where it lists tier 1, tier 2 interventions, tier 2 interventions, tier 3, tier 3 intervention. Now, I get down to law enforcement interventions, weapons, drugs, battery, communicating threats. And I see under tier 3 interventions, teen court, community service, and judicial justice system as a last resort. I don't have a problem with that. But whereas in the one right above it, you talk about out-of-school suspension should be avoided when possible, which indicates to me that out-of-school suspension is an available remedy if need be, there is nothing in that last section that seems to allow the board, by agreeing to this, to allow the board the possibility to remove people from school who they deem to be hazardous to the well-being of other students. And I just wanted to...
There's nothing in the agreement that limits us in terms of what we do. What you see there are the offenses that are automatically get referred to law enforcement. Out, if you bring a weapon to school, that's an automatic law enforcement intervention besides what the school does.
I just want to be clear, because when we sign something, we're entering into an agreement, and, you know, some people will, you know how people will interpret things, and being very exact and specific, and, "Well, you didn't say that." It's, I mean, I...
It was one of the first questions our principals were asking about, is there's nothing in here that limits our principals and their ability to do what they need to for school safety? And I'll let Wayne speak maybe to the legal aspect of that.
Paragraph G on page 2, Mr. Higgins, paragraph G on page 2 was one of the additions that was made in response to the concern of the principals. And that paragraph sets out very specifically that this agreement doesn't limit that authority. But the, but I think that the tone of the language of the agreement is more positive in terms of dealing with the misconduct, but the authority is not limited. And that was, and that was one of the additions after we got Mr. Bullard on board that was made to try to clarify that.
I just want to be clear that, when it comes to making decisions, I mean, I can tell you, this board does not remove a child from school lightly. I mean, we will sit there and argue amongst ourselves, is this in the best interest? I mean, Dr. Markley will tell you that we have, we're looking for solutions that does not put a child back, or put a child out on the street, if we can help it. But if it's a situation where we feel that there's no other choice, otherwise we are endangering the welfare and the well-being of the other 26,000 students we have to deal with, that we are prepared to do that. And I want to be clear that it's understood by not only you and not only the signees on this, but to the general public in totality, that if there is a student that, in our best judgment, does need to be out of the school, that the school's board still has the authority to act.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, absolutely. And the purpose of this agreement is to deal, one way to look at it is to deal with the kids who make us mad, not the kids who scare us. The kids who scare us need to be dealt with appropriately. Okay? And everybody that was a party to our discussions would agree with what you just said.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear about that.
And I think, like Judge Corpening said, G does address that, on page 2. But it's a good point, Ms. Higgins, but I think...
And that was one of the things, like I said, when our principals looked at it, they wanted to make sure that was in there. So that paragraph is specifically one that we added.
Did you want to add something to it for...
No, no, Judge Corpening said exactly what I was going to say. That paragraph G hits it right, hits the nail on the head. And the primary focus is, even though it does deal with school discipline, the primary focus is how law enforcement reacts to incidents, minor incidents at school. So it does not in any way inhibit the ability of principals, the superintendent, or the board to suspend or expel students if they believe it's in the best interest of the school and the safety of the students and staff.
But if this, in reading through this interagency agreement, it appears that the onus or the responsibility is more on the school system than on any other agency. And so if you're saying that this is more direction for our SROs, it doesn't, it doesn't read that way in the agreement. And that's, I agree with Mr. Higgins in that I have concerns that this, that this is so prescriptive that it's almost usurping our ability as a board, because we are, as Mr. Higgins likes to remind us, a policy-driven board. We do create policy. We have a policy committee that reviews this information and makes those decisions. And I think that usurps our responsibility as elected officials. So I do have some concerns about the language and the perception that you get when reading this.
So, Ms. Koval, I'll say that nothing in this agreement limits your authority as an elected board. Your lawyer has paid close attention to that. We tried to make sure that that was clear. This does ask school-based folks to provide those graduated responses to student misconduct instead of charging, instead of the law enforcement charging, yes. But the school personnel are in a much better position to deal with that behavior at school immediately than a referral to law enforcement, which then puts off for, in the best case, our juvenile system a month, to worst case, in our adult system, for our 16- and 17-year-olds, six, nine, 10 months a year. And the 16- or 17-year-olds forgotten what they even did at school that led to their arrest. So it really deals with not arresting and providing a graduated response model to deal with the behavior. In terms of the serious cases and where this board would intervene, this agreement doesn't even approach that group of students.
Well, you know, I know we have some principals in the audience, and I, it almost implies that we're not doing a lot of this, and I know for a fact that we are. We do a lot of interventions, a lot of behavior redirection in order to keep the child in school. So most of the situations that we see are the worst-case scenarios. And we don't see them very often, which means, which would indicate to me that a lot of this is happening already in the schools. I don't want to imply by this agreement that this is not already being done by our staff in our schools. We, I think, for the most part, they bend over backwards to try to accommodate situations. So, you know, in looking at what's in the best interest of the student.
This, when I, when we put this together, after the revisions from Wayne and the input from our principals, I thought it placed more restrictions on the police side of the house than on our side of the house. The language that's in there is very clear. We're not limiting what we can do within the context of our policy. What it's trying to do is prevent us from charging kids for, if two kids have a fight, in the past, it might have resulted in the charge of a fraud, when it was, when it was two kids having a fight. Well, we're going to suspend those kids if we need to, but we also need to suspend them and charge them when it may be the first time that those two students have ever gotten in trouble. So we're not going to, we're not going to stop our discipline, but it sort of prevents us from sometimes hitting the kid twice with a penalty.
How do the, how do the principals in general, what is the feedback from them on this agreement?
When they first looked at it, they had lots of questions and lots of suggestions, and that's why we, that's why it's been an 18-month process, is going back and trying to put those revisions in for those principals. Rick has worked with them in terms of their response. I think, is Al still here? You want anything in terms of the agreement you want us to talk about?
I'm sorry.
Is there anything you want to get to the...
He's pleading the fifth.
I don't want to speak for him for a second.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear how you feel like this is, I mean, is this going to give a roadmap for you to lay out to your, to your school? I mean, where, how are you feeling about this agreement being...
Mr. Bryant, for the mic to pick you up, would you please come up to the podium, please?
Sorry, I didn't want to put you on the spot.
Putting you on the spot.
I think that pretty much the questions that you're asking are the same questions that we had when we first saw the agreement. I will say there was an opportunity for us to participate, provide feedback, and to weigh in on the document. And I will agree with you, Ms. Koval, we do bend over backwards and try to do as much as we can to try to bring our suspension rates down, and certainly, we want to try to keep kids in school. So you're correct, we do those things. But we did have some input, and we did, we're able to take a look at this process before you guys saw this document, so.
Have the, what is your assessment of the SROs within your school? I mean, I personally, from the outside looking in and having, having dealt with some of the SROs within our school system, I think they've done a phenomenal job.
I would agree.
And I think they've done a tremendous job walking that fine line between trying to mentor and assist students and help them redirect to, you know, to determining when something is a criminal activity that needs to be prosecuted. So I think they have done a phenomenal job. Is this, is this in response to maybe a necessity to define their role more carefully?
I'm not sure how to answer that question, but I would agree with you that they do a great job, and I think that they are looking at alternatives, they're looking at things such as teen court and other opportunities to try to keep kids out of the justice system. So I think that they, they do walk that line, and I think they are acting as a counselor a lot of times, and certainly, when the time comes and they have to charge students, they do those things. But certainly, I think that they are much more reflective these days, and I think that's a good thing.
Well, and I have to say that what I hope comes out of this, too, is that we understand the effect of not only the student that is in the fight, but the students who are sitting in those seats trying to learn around the disruptions. And that's where I hope that this will help, because we can't forget those students, all those kids that are sitting in class trying to learn, and they can't, because you have one student who's being disruptive. So I would love to see the, you know, this become a roadmap for all of the teachers, something to say, "Okay, here's where I go with this sort of behavior," to hopefully stop it. Because I, you know, I do see that as an issue. I have kids in high school. I know what they're dealing with.
Yes, ma'am.
So I appreciate the hard work y'all have put in.
I think anytime...
And if I could just add, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, this is your house.
I just want to add that I think anytime all these various agencies that have taken place here are working together, you have to see an improvement with all the various agencies and the law enforcement and so forth working together. And if you look at F and G, and particularly, when, you know, in G, it says, "This agreement is primarily focused on criminal or juvenile charges against students and shall not prevent or inhibit." So to me, it's very positive in that you've got more agencies, more individuals working together, really to help the school system. And I agree with Dr. Markley, what he said sometimes, that two students get engaged in a fight. You know, I had my share of those, I shouldn't say it, many years ago, you know, as a little kid. I'd hate to think I would have been charged with just a couple of hard-headed boys. One of them smacked the other one, and that was the end of it. So I think it's very positive, and I think it reinforces what we're trying to do.
Well, I'd still send you home, Don.
Yep. I still hold the record at one apart.
And let me hasten to add, Ms. Koval, that our school resource officers do a great job. I mean, I know lots of them personally, I've worked with them at school personally, and we do some pretty cool things here. We do direct referral by SROs to teen court. That doesn't happen everywhere. In fact, it almost doesn't happen anywhere else, where they don't have to get referred to criminal justice to go to teen court. We already do that. But this will bring consistency, and as a reminder about the positive interaction that we're supposed to have with students, all of us. You know, I try to have a positive interaction when they end up with me, too. And, but I'll be the first to say that there's already lots good happening. Our effort in this is to try to make it even better.
I've said in the past, and I'll say it again, short of being at home with a parent, the safest place for a kid is in one of our schools. Now, it's not perfect, and there aren't times when it's, when there aren't things that we can do better. I think this agreement is just one of those attempts to help, to make that better, and to make sure that the child gets a lesson for when he misbehaves, but if it's not to the point where he needs a record for that as well. Now, there are some we're going to send off, when you get to the bottom list, drugs, weapons, there are some non-negotiables, and we're not changing what our non-negotiables are.
Well, I guess, you know, I do want to reiterate that the SRO situation is a testament to our police chiefs and the work that they do with the training of the SROs. It is a unique situation for them to be in. Most of them are used to being out in the field and dealing with some very dangerous criminal activity going into the school system is a completely different animal, and it's, they've done a tremendous job at training the SROs. I just, I don't know, it just, it just seems like, to me, that this agreement is basically putting down what we already do in writing, but, you know, maybe I'm missing the point.
I have one other comment. I'm happy to see that DSS is involved with this, because I think many of us on this board have said that one of the major problems with students starts at home, and that if we had parents, a lot of the kids who get in trouble, we find that when we hear from the parents, either the parents are blind to what's going on, I mean, you'd be amazed how many, "I can't believe my son did this, or my daughter did this." Or they don't really seem to care. And I can only hope that DSS will, by signing off on this, will take an active role in reaching out to parents when kids get in, because I know several of these things talk about, home referrals, parent involvement and everything, that in fact, that is going to happen. That's not just simply some words on this piece of paper, but that there will be attempts to reach out to the parents, to find out what's going on in that home, to find out how we can get the parents involved in their own children's education, because I think it has been shown that when you have parents involved in a child's education, not only does it improve discipline, but it improves academics also. So I am happy to see they're on here. I just hope that they're not just signing off on this just to make it look good.
So Ms. Wanda Moreno, the assistant director at DSS, was an active participant in our process. I'll tell you that DSS has focused more on educational issues in the last two to three years than ever. Every child that comes to our DSS court, where there's been a petition filed, when they do reports to court, there's a very detailed section on the educational staff. when they do reports to court, there's a very detailed section on the educational status of, of that child in terms of where they're in school, about their attendance, their grades, any special needs, is there an IEP, is it being complied with? They're really paying attention to that process and so, so I think, Mr. Higgins, they're, I think they're on board with that. And, and Trillium also, Ms. Amy Horgan from Trillium Coastal Care, when we started Trillium Healthcare Now, uh, was involved in this and I met with, uh, Lisa Wainwright, the CEO of, of Trillium, uh, just a week or so ago about this, and she's very supportive of it, because one of their missions is to look at gaps in services and then try to, to meet those gaps. Um, I think there's some gaps in services in our mental health delivery and I'm hoping that, that we'll be able to document some of that and maybe find some other resources to help our students who do have mental health issues that are unmet.
Any other questions? We've, we've kind of turned it around, would someone care to make a motion?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. [applause]
Judge Corpening, I'd like to thank you and the others that were here tonight in support, particularly this young man here who looks familiar, a former student of mine, uh, I was telling the superintendent, uh...
Yep. He was out at the, his water was, he was out there.
Do we get to leave too?
No, we're proving...
Well, with all the activity I've been asked, let's take one of our infamous little five-minute breaks, please.
Five twenty-minute breaks?
Right there. Oh, yeah. He was seventy on the front. Yeah, I haven't seen you in a while.